Okay, very good. I'm going to go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's July 8th, 2020, and we'll begin with our Commissioners' public statement read by Commissioner Giffens. I think she's having some audio problems, so let's give her a moment. I called the meeting to order and we paused, so we will come back to item number two. We're gonna put you right on the spot. Item number two, Commissioners' public statement as read by you.
Okay.
If you would please, thank you.
Yes. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin, and we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination, harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Jones, would you read the statement we issued on Monday following the events of July 4?
Yes. The Monroe County Board of Commissioners issued the statement in response to the recent and very disturbing information and videos shared by Vox Booker, a resident of Monroe County and one of Monroe County Human Rights Commissioners. We condemn hate and violence and are extremely concerned by the hostility and racial animus shown in this video. This is a criminal issue. We trust the Monroe County prosecuting attorney, Erica Alafon, will respond appropriately in order to protect the safety of Monroe County residents. While we have no power to act in criminal matters, we vow to continue to do everything in our power as the executive and legislative branches of Monroe County stand up against racism, violence, and hatred.
Thank you so much. All right. Appreciate that. And with that, we will move on to department updates. And we'll begin with Ms. Cottle at the Health Department, if you would please.
Sure. Thank you for allowing me to speak again today. I appreciate your time. The Health Department does continue to work with area schools as they develop their reopening plans. They are following the Department of Education, the Indiana State Department of Health, and CDC guidelines in terms of reopening plans. So I'm pleased, I again am amazed at the work that they are doing to try to bring back our students in some fashion and provide home virtual options for those who don't want to bring their children back to the school yet. The Indiana State Department of Health has hired a school nurse liaison to work with both local health departments and area schools across the state. And I think that that will be very helpful as well, making sure that we're all really staying on the same page, talking about the same questions, and so that we have more consistency across the state with our schools. The health officer, Dr. Sharp, did release a new health order last week, and he is currently working on the next health order, which is expected out later this month. Part of that working is conversations and reviewing concerns and possibilities with our county and city elected officials, with Indiana University, with our hospitals, so that we can look at our situations, the information, the data, and make good, sound decisions for how we'll proceed. The next order, while I do not have the specifics, final determinations have not been made. We do expect it to include some sort of face covering requirement when in public. So this is just kind of an FYI that that is expected to be coming later this month. Definitely by the end of the month, maybe before that. There are a number of details to work out in terms of reasonable expectations for accommodations, and those things are being evaluated at this time. It is also expected that it will include some additional interventions that are aimed at reducing the potential spread of COVID-19, especially where face coverings may not be able to be worn. So that could include limited seating requirement of markings. You know, we have all along talked about markings of six feet so that people know how far to stand apart if they're in line, those kinds of things. But this could make that a part of the requirements. So we are looking at those kinds of interventions as well. Remember that distancing and mask wearing are top two prevention precautionary things that we can be doing when we are out in public. So with each order, we get many questions, many complaints, and enforcement actions to address. So we are also developing a plan on how we manage that additional influx, expecting that with order and a new requirement for face coverings that will likely have more questions, more complaints, and more enforcement actions to be taken. So we are working through those plans, think that they are coming along well, and hopefully I'll have more to share on this at the Friday press conference. But wanted to kind of give you those updates about those plans. While our hospital emergency departments and our ventilator use may not be overly burdened at this moment, our percentage of positives among testing may be stable. We do recognize that we have an increase in positive cases among our 20 and 30-year-olds, and it's what we're seeing across the country as well. And as our population expands and people continue to get out and about, we have to accept the potential for greater community spread, and that that's probably likely. So to that, I would remind everyone that we have to practice all prevention methods and precautions, and that includes six-foot distancing when we're in public, when we're around others outside of our family. And perhaps if someone is symptomatic or may have, you may be wondering, maybe it's cold or an allergy, but still maintaining that distance can be beneficial. Washing our hands regularly, cleaning them, not touching our face, staying home if we're ill, and certainly monitoring. We all need to be monitoring for symptoms. We need to get tested if we have symptoms or we think we may have been exposed. And then I would also add that it is very important that if somebody tests positive, that they are cooperating with the contact tracers and the public health officials, trying to do that follow-up to ensure that people have the right information. They know how to isolate, how to quarantine, for how long to do that. We definitely need their cooperation in those matters. So stay tuned. We will have more information on that as we move forward with those plans. On top of all of that, our department will also be temporarily relocating in the near future, probably until December. So there will be some remodeling going on, on the main level of the Health Services Building. I don't have exact date yet of when we will be in the middle of that move, but during that time, there will be a few days where we will be closed so that we can make sure that one, everything is moved from one building into the, into another, and we get things set back up. So once we have those exact dates, and that's coming, it may be next week, but we will send out public notice about the closing times for that as soon as we get it. The lower level of our building, Futures Clinic, our Education Department, the Disease Intervention Office, all of those services in the lower level will remain open as they are now. The remodel may affect on occasion a temporary closure or something like that, but that should be pretty limited. So we will keep you posted on that, but know that we will be changing locations, and we will be down for a few days during that transition. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle, for you, Dr. Sharp, as a staff board. It's amazing the work that's been done all along. And clearly, the plans for the department's refurbishment were made before the pandemic started. But hopefully, this is, we're not adding too much to your stress level, but it's going to be well worth it because it will be a much nicer working environment. So we appreciate everybody's flexibility on that.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. And with that, we'll turn to Ms. Allison Moore, Emergency Management.
Good morning. We are lucky that we also get to work with our public and private schools, like Ms. Cottle had mentioned, lucky because it is very, has been very joyful in assuring they have great plans and procedures in place. And this week, we received an allotment of PPE supplies from the Indiana Department of Education and the Indiana Department of Homeland Security, and we were able to be the hub and distribute those supplies to our public and private schools. All of those, all of our schools, except for one, is, which is pending pickup, have those supplies already and are getting all of those plans in place to distribute those to their students and such. So they are working fearlessly with the Health Department in our office as well. And wanted that to be noted, that they now have those PPE supplies. So if you're a parent and concerned, they are moving in those directions. We are continuing with our homemade mask drive. We did, in fact, receive additional masks this week. So that's two weeks in a row that we have received supplies. And so I want to reach out to those individuals, and hopefully they're hearing today, and thank them for that service that they are making those donations. Those sites are located in four different places in our community, and they are on our county website, which is co.munro.in.us. They're on the Emergency Management section. We also are working with the Red Cross to have blood drives in our community. We have a July 17th blood drive scheduled, which is full. It's by appointment only. And so we have added an additional day. This will be our fourth in total, and it is scheduled for July 28. You can register at redcross.org. You have to put in your zip code. And I have had a few people reach out to me this week. You can only schedule within a 14-day period. And so when you do your mass search with that zip code, it doesn't show up on the 28th. So you need to then expand your, expand your dates prior to that 14-day to see that option, and then you can register for that July 28. That will be held at the Monroe County Convention Center, and that information is also on our website. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you for your hard work in getting the, the extended blood drive, getting additional dates. I know that that took quite a bit. We really appreciate that. Comments or questions from my colleagues?
No, but I think it's, it's wonderful that the Red Cross is also providing testing on whether or not you have COVID antibodies.
Yes. I'd also like to mention that as those schools came yesterday to pick up supplies and such, there were many Highway Department administrative staff that were willing to go up and down those stairs and help carry those boxes for us. So just kudos to that department as well. It was wonderful. We have such a team effort. Thank you.
Fabulous. Thank you so much. Now we'll turn to Ms. Ridge at Public Works. Do you have an update for us on roadworks?
We are paving. It's hot, I can tell you that. But yeah, we're up on North Maple Grove Road this week. Should be finishing up with that tomorrow. And then we'll move to the, or we'll be done with it, maybe it'd be next week. Sorry. And then we'll move, I believe, a stand south to Central.
Got it. Good deal. Thank you. Comments or questions? My colleagues? Great. Thank you so much. We appreciate your ongoing efforts and the crews that are out there working in this heat. Excellent. And now we will go to Ms. Smith, Monroe County Auditor.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Sorry, I don't have a video feed. I'm broadcasting live from the council office. We need, we'll need to get a camera in here at some point, I guess. But we have got a great microphone, so I hope you can hear me pretty well. What I sent you was the County Form 144, which I'm required to by state law in early July for presentation at your meeting. And this is a pretty long document. It covers every county fund where we pay people wages from. And it's a, it's basically a, a just-to-do item at the beginning of the budget so that you can see what departments have requested. Now, the, this year, along with the last few years, the county council has actually told the department heads what to put on this form, and this year they told them to ask for, you know, the, exactly what was given last year. Now, that's not really what this form is for. This form is for each department to really request what they want to request. So when I present this to you, I just want you to know that the department's presented that based on what the county council asked them for, not what they'd probably like to have. My personal opinion, as your, the secretary of your organization, as well as the secretary of their organization, and the financial, the CFO of the county, I would like to see a minimum of a 1% raise for every county employee, which is still substantially less than the cost of living expenses. I know in my department, I've had people with children have to pay like two times what the daycare is because they gotta hold their daycare position open, but they still don't have daycare because the daycares are closed, but they'll lose their position if they don't keep paying. So the COVID, the COVID expenses have been great on our families. And I just, we've worked very hard to get the salaries up to what they are, and they're still well below industry standards and other government standards. So I think if we don't really try hard to at least cover cost of living increase, then, then, then we're just gonna go farther backwards. So, so as your CFO, I am requesting that you support me with the county council in saying that the, the employees need something, even if it's small, so that we don't go backwards. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Let's see if my colleagues have comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Certainly. Our, our employees have been amazing during this whole experience. And for them to end up with things just being even tougher for them because the cost of living is going up and their salaries are not, that's, that's just inexcusable. Somehow, we have to arrange.
I totally agree with you. I totally agree with you. In my own department, we have worked so hard during this whole event that people had to obviously cancel their vacations to keep the wheels turning. And so their vacation rolled into their sick bank, which they won't get to use. And it's, it's, it's one of those where you're pulling yourself up by the bootstrap situation. We've worked actually harder, and for us to go backwards, it would almost be a crime. So I would really, that, that's why I'm heartfully asking for your support when I go to the county council, because it might be a hard sell, but I feel like I have to have the backs of our employees because they've been stellar. You know, we have helped other organizations in this county who were paid more than our people to begin with. And so the last thing we want to do is hurt our own employees. So thank you. Thank you for those nice words.
Commissioner Giffens, comments or questions?
Oh, I just echo what Commissioner Jones said. We, we have stellar employees, and they have really gone above and beyond.
Yeah, absolutely. I absolutely agree. I wonder, Ms. Smith, if you could send us the COLA data since last, since the last 144 went through, which is a year ago.
Yes, I would love to do that.
That'd be great.
I would love to do that. And let me send you the measurement of what 1% would look like and the COLA number would look like as far as dollar values across the county.
That would be, that would be amazing, and I absolutely agree that our employees have worked amazingly hard throughout this process. I know that it has impacted our office greatly. I know it's impacted Health Department. I know it has impacted every department in some way. Just, you know, having to be flexible and having to work doubly hard to, to provide services for county residents, which continues. We, we have not stopped providing services for county residents since the pandemic began. So that's a really, really important point. And a question for Mr. Cockrell, if you would. These would be due to be presented to the county council at their work session July 28. Is that correct?
No. This is Angie.
Okay.
It has to go in August.
Oh, in August. At the, in August at the regular meeting?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that information on the timing. I appreciate that. Let's be sure, let's be sure we get on their agenda with that particular item for August. That would be great.
I apologize for being muted and not knowing it.
You probably had a great explanation. Okay, excellent. All right, very good. Are there any other departmental updates? Doesn't appear so. Okay, excellent. And with that, we will turn to public comments. This is for these items that are not on our agenda. We will begin with Ms. Richmond. Be sure to unmute.
I'm actually on the agenda, but I'm happy to speak now if you'd like.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, oh, I see. We have you as a reporter. No, that's fine. That's perfect. No, that's fine. Go ahead now if you, if you don't mind.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good morning, all. It's a pleasure to be here again for my annual visit this year as an employee of HealthNet, which I am very pleased about. Did you get the handout that I sent you? Okay, great. So as you know, six months ago, HealthNet acquired Volunteers in Medicine. That was at our request and after a lot of due diligence. We did that because we thought that with the changing healthcare environment and increasing number of people becoming insured, but not necessarily receiving healthcare, that the free clinic model was too limited to really do justice to the unmet medical need in Monroe County. So we started dating HealthNet, and then we got married. And I think we never did have a honeymoon with, between COVID and the renovations. We haven't really experienced a honeymoon, but, but we are in great shape. And I wanted to let you know how this has done exactly what we wanted it to do when we set out to become a federally qualified health center. So as you know, our doors opened as the new health center in January. We immediately went into a renovation that we hoped would have been finished before we opened. And then as that was, we were in the middle of the renovation, and we found ourselves in the middle of a pandemic as well. So it has been a crazy first six months. But still, I have some numbers for you. We, in the first six months, saw a total of just about 700 unique patients, which is more than what half of VIM would have been. And that was with a lot of canceled appointments that we canceled, a lot of people being hesitant to come to the clinic for about 1,400 patient visits. So it's like everybody came twice, essentially. We have, interestingly enough, this was not, would not have been my prediction. I would have thought that for the first many months, we would have mostly Volunteers in Medicine patients, self-pay. We actually had 43% of our patients in the last six months are insured, which means that the word is out there, in spite of COVID, that people with Medicare, commercial insurance, and primarily Medicaid are coming, which means that we are reaching people that we wanted to reach. We are reaching people with Healthy Indiana Plan. We are reaching people experiencing homelessness who are not well-served at a middle-class-based health center because if you get there late, you're not seen, and it's just not set up for people really challenged by issues related to poverty. So we're delighted about that. Last month, we, with the addition of two nurse practitioners, we started seeing children, which we are very pleased about. And just Monday of this week, we reopened our dental clinic. So that's fantastic, and that right now is focused on emergencies primarily because dental is a high risk for COVID exposure. With grant funding, I was able to get all the PPE needed for, for dentistry, which is much more specialized than regular medical care. So we are, we are happy. I gave you some success stories. I will tell you a quick, hot-off-the-press success story. Last week, an uninsured woman came in with pains in her side, acute, severe pains in her side. And our new nurse practitioner, who's a midwife, as it turns out, and right now focusing on women's health, did an exam and had these wide eyes and came in and talked to Shelley and said, oh my gosh, this woman is either pregnant or she has this huge mass. And the woman has three kids. She knows what it is to be pregnant. She says, I, I'm not pregnant. So our nurse practitioner said, well, you've gotta go to the emergency department. She has no insurance. She didn't wanna go. Kristen insisted that she go. She went and delivered a full-term baby. No prenatal care, had no idea she was pregnant. And she said she knows labor pain. She's been through it three times. It's like she left one day and like came back and surprise, look what I brought home. We see a range of, of, of things. I mean, that was extraordinary, and fortunately, all, all went well. HealthNet, unlike them, HealthNet receives federal dollars as well as insurance revenue. And we are still in need of, of your support, your continued support, and we will. This year, we, partly because it's our startup year, partly because of COVID and the renovations, we are in a deficit this year that HealthNet is having to cover for us. Like other medical facilities, we are very hard-hit because of the pandemic. Some staff were furloughed. Our staff were, as all clinics, were divided into cohorts, which means they each worked for half of the week, either mornings or afternoons. And so their incomes are all cut down by 50%. It's been very challenging for everybody. And as you were talking about, the county employees, the, the HealthNet Bloomington staff have been amazing. We have taken every precaution for, for COVID. So people, I feel absolutely confident that people can feel safe coming to the clinic now that the renovations have been completed. We have two entrances we can use so we can keep people with respiratory symptoms entirely separate from people with everyday chronic conditions. We have separate exam rooms, separate waiting room. We do pre-screenings. We have the PPE. We've got the waiting rooms with chairs separated and so forth. So I think that we're seeing the beginning impact of being able to serve more people. I don't think we've been outside of Monroe County very much yet. People should feel comfortable coming, but you know, that's, takes more promotion and so forth. So we are primarily a Bloomington Monroe County clinic and probably always will be. And we are so grateful to your support, to all of you for your support. I mean, it's really, we couldn't do this work for this vulnerable population without it. And on behalf of HealthNet, I want to thank you for that and put in a shout-out for continued support. And I can take questions if you have any.
Thank you so much, Ms. Richmond. What amazing work that's going on. And it's, it's such a, it's such a bright spot, and it's such a bright story in these really troubled times. So we appreciate that. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones? Can you, can you start again, Commissioner Jones? We've got a lot of noise on our system.
Sorry. I would like to congratulate on your marriage with HealthNet. That certainly sounds like a pretty ideal situation. And I would also like to congratulate the lady on your surprise baby.
Yeah, I will pass that on. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Giffens?
Well, as Ms. Richmond knows, I've been a supporter of VIM and now HealthNet since its inception, and I'm so proud that it exists in, in our community. I was gonna ask if you're set up for telehealth?
Oh, thank you for raising that. I had forgotten. Yes, we absolutely are set up for telehealth and video health. And once people have a first face-to-face visit, then we can then web enable them so they can then have future follow-ups if they don't want to come in by either phone or video. I got a grant to purchase additional monitors and headsets for, for that. So yes, that's absolutely happening. And, and so that also allows us to do behavioral health by telehealth, since we don't have that on-site yet, but we can set people up in Indianapolis. And just to say one more word about grant funding, our entire dental clinic expansion, all of that new equipment was grant money that I brought in. So this is, we are still very reliant on community support, donations and grants. And I don't see that changing anytime soon.
Amazing work. Thank you so much. Excellent. Thanks for, thanks for addressing the telehealth. That's a great, that's a great point to make.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thanks for being here today. And with that, we'll, we'll open this up for other public comments. So the time limit is three minutes on public comment. And I wonder, TSD, if you could tell us if we're going to be using the timer on the screen or the audio notice? The timer on the screen. Perfect. I see it. Excellent. Does anyone have a public comment for items not on our agenda?
There appear to be several names.
Okay.
I was going to go with first. Sorry, Penny, did you want to interject? Apologies. All right, I'm going to go with the first name on the list. I apologize. I can't pronounce this. So if you go ahead and state your name when I unmute you.
Yeah, hi. I'm Sakeesh Wury. So I'm resident of East Creek's Edge Drive, and that's in Bloomington. Even though it's in Bloomington, it comes under city limits. The neighborhood has, has several issues. We are not receiving any kind of county services. Road-related issue, drainage issues, flood-related issues. I have reached out to different boards and I've been told that this, this neighborhood has been passed between city and county in the transition. They did not complete all the work and bond expired, things like that. So I am kind of at a loss. I talked to a few people last week and also called your office, the Commissions Office, and asked about assistance. I was supposed to get an email, but I never received it. But again, the concern, major concern is East Creek's Edge Drive neighborhood, and we are not receiving any services from county, even though we are paying taxes to the county, our property taxes, all the, whatever taxes that you guys collect. I also have a neighbor that, that is also on call. His name is Sedory. I'll, with this, I'll hand it over to him. I don't know if you want to restart the talk for him, but that's, that's our concerns. I would like Commissioners to consider the situations and help us in any way that you can.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm not really clear on what you're, what services you're not receiving, but can, could I ask you to please call our office at 812-349-2550?
I did, yeah. I did last week and expressed my concern and I'm supposed to get email, but I never received anything.
Okay.
We'll send an email to you, three Commissioners, and
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I, I'm sorry that you're having difficulty and we will ensure that we address this as quickly as possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next on the list, please, technical services. Ms. Dayton.
Next up is Jim Shelton.
Good morning, Mr. Shelton.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton with the chamber, wanting to update the public on events and status with the CASA office. We still have a need for more CASA volunteers. We now have about 60 children that we cannot provide a CASA for. And as you know, these are the children that are in the juvenile justice system because they've been abused and neglected by their parents. We find that there's been a pretty strong increase in domestic violence as a result of COVID and all the stress that puts on a family. So we need people to volunteer. We're having, as I know, I told you a couple of weeks ago, we are, we've added an additional training session that will start on August 3rd. Will run through the 26th. It'll be on Mondays, Wednesdays and Thursdays evenings from 5:30 to 8:30, and it will be conducted via Zoom. Our June training was our first try at doing our training sessions by Zoom, and it worked out very well. So we put in a new training in hopes that we can get another class and get more volunteers providing service to these kids. In addition, we have a fundraising breakfast on, via Zoom, on July 15th next week at 8:30. You can go on Facebook and search Monroe County CASA and find information and a link to register for that. So you can have coffee. If you choose to help support CASA, that'd be great. And you can learn more about what's going on. So if it's something you're interested in, and I hope it will be to some folks, they can go to monroecountycasas.org, click on the volunteer link and get a lot more information and find an application form. Or they can call 333-2272. The CASA office has been working virtually through this COVID emergency, and we are just starting to transition back into the physical office. So there will typically be two staff members in the office at a time. The other folks will still be working from home. So if you call and get an immediate answering machine, just give them your number and somebody will call you back. That just means they're probably on the line with some other folks. Also, you need to call before going down there and showing up so that they can make sure, that we can make sure there's somebody available to answer the doorbell. So thank you for the opportunity to share that information with folks. It's, it's a strong need that we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. We appreciate that. Next person up, please.
Next is Randy Paul.
Right. Good morning, Mr. Paul.
Morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I got an email from your legal department and from this body about 10 minutes before the meeting started that I just wanted to address. One, I appreciate the email. Essentially, what it was, was some details about what's happened in the past. I don't want to go through those. It doesn't really matter now. The, the bottom line was a willingness by commissioners and legal department to work together on compliance, which I welcome. I've never wanted this to be a confrontational kind of exercise. I was hoping we could get to the point where we would do this because it was the right thing to do and we'd all feel good about the end product. So once again, here's my offer for you to consider. You don't have to answer today, obviously, but here's, I want it in public, so there's no misunderstanding. I've offered before and offer again that I will voluntarily train new inspectors who out and do new inspections. And I will assure you that they will be ADA compliant. I sent you the document. It's 85 pages long about how to do it. I've done it before. I can do this for you guys and it won't cost you anything. We can do it with volunteers. And my suggestion is that we have it done by election day. So we could also include not only the ADA requirements, but the Help America Vote requirements. They are not standalone laws. They interact with each other. So a site can be, have a compliant and not be ADA compliant. So we need to be able to look at both at the same time. I think if we do that, we can put this to rest. We will, at least at this point in time, ADA is celebrating its 30th anniversary. It's been 30 years and we haven't done this. The transition plan we keep talking about was due 27 years ago. It's time. And we can do this without it being a fight. I have felt for a long time, no one benefits if we go into some kind of, if I file a complaint with the Justice Department or I file a lawsuit. You know, it's going to be, it's going to be years, probably years before we get to compliance, we go that route, which helps nobody. I think we can do this in a cooperative effort. There is my offer. If you want it, let's run with it. If not, then we're going to have to deal with this again. So thanks for the offer and I look forward to hearing back from you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. We appreciate that. Next commenter.
One moment. Next up is Nathan Muchler.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Muchler?
Good morning. I have a number of things from this meeting that I would like to respond to. The first thing is, I understand that the board has trust in the prosecutor's office. But I would remind this board, they have the power and the authority to demand, to verify and to follow up. Trust is good, but use your authority to demand action, verify that that action is being taken and follow up. On the same note, we had to provide, I saw people providing their own security so that people weren't killed when we, when we used our voices at the courthouse square last night. I would encourage this board to think about defunding the sheriff's office, defunding the law enforcement, because I don't see what they're doing and using that money to pay CASA volunteers, to pay for ADA training, for pay for things that help people in our community, pay for Health Net, pay so that the child that was born successfully in the hospital has care through the rest of their life. Use your power, use your authority to do that. I've heard a lot of talk from people about how the last week has made Monroe County look bad. And you know what? Nothing changed. This is the same county we were in last year. It's the same county it'll be tomorrow. It just happened to happen in public and happened to get on the national news. And if that makes you uncomfortable, like it makes me uncomfortable, good. Take that discomfort, mobilize it to take action before it becomes too late. If not now, when? What will it take? Ask yourself, what will it take for me to take action? And can I live with myself if I wait until that thing happens before I use the power and the authority that I have as a member of this board? I encourage you to ask yourself and to think on that. And frankly, if that's not something you're comfortable with, that's fine. We all have our limits. You can resign. You can step down. You can make way for someone who is ready to step up. Thank you so much for your time and for listening. Verify, demand and follow-up action with the prosecutor's office. Don't just trust. Trust isn't enough. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Muchler. We appreciate you. Next, please. Ms. Dayton.
Next will be Ann Bright.
Ms. Bright, good morning. First, I have to admit that I've been a satisfied citizen of Bloomington and Monroe County for 12 years now. But I am very disturbed at things that are happening. I also have to admit, this is the first time I've tuned into a commissioner's meeting. I'd really like to have an understanding of the commissioner's responsibility as far as the sheriff's department. If the county council approves a budget, I'd like to know the responsibility of the commissioners as they see it. And this concerns, does the sheriff's department, are they required to report data on encounters and arrests to anyone outside the department? Where is that information going so that proper evaluation can be made of their services? Since I have a little more time, I'd like to say, I don't know where to turn, but I would like more information about stride because there are communities that are using what may have been police funding to incorporate teams of EMTs and social workers to address issues. I, it's a plea for more accurate information. And in particular, I'd like to understand the commissioner's responsibility as far as oversight of the sheriff's office. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bright. I would ask that if you have a specific question for us, you can always email CommissionersOffice@co.monroe.in.us. And, or you can find us on the website, or you can give us a call and we can either talk to you, call you back or email you. Thank you so much. Next up, please.
Next is Chip Sedory.
Chip Sedory, please. Good morning.
Can you hear me okay?
We can.
All right. So my name is Chip Sedory. I, I do live in Bloomington and am a resident of the Creek's Edge Drive neighborhood that is right near Meadow Creek. My neighbor just spoke up earlier and I wanted to also speak up and just voice my concern about the fact that we seem to be in a bit of a gray area that is sort of in limbo between county and city in terms of whose job it is to manage some things as it relates to drainage, snow removal, you know, maintaining some of the areas that are not part of our property but are either owned by county or city. And then on top of that, some of the retention ponds and flooding and some of those types of issues like road repair where there's some potholes, things like that. We're, we're sort of in an area that's in limbo as it relates to some of the utilities and other things too, but I think time we've kind of reached out, have the city and the county both kind of pointed each other, which is very frustrating just because some of it's just basic upkeep and maintenance that is, that's not being handled. And I'm happy to call the office or send an email. But it would be nice to come to some kind of consensus as to whose responsibility it is just to maintain just these basic functions and get them remedied if that's possible. And the other thing that I'd like to at least just touch on is, I think the sheriff's department does a fine job. I do support the work they've done. And in fact, if you number of sheriffs, to number of residents, I would argue that, that they don't necessarily have a lot of manpower. And if anything, that, you know, they deserve our support. And so that's, that's all I've got to say.
Great. Thank you so much. And be sure to include your address in the email or your phone call and then we can be very clear about, about residency. So thank you. We appreciate you waiting and speaking with us. Next up, please.
All right, next up, the screen name starts with Ben.
Alvente. Butia, yes.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We sure can. Thank you.
Yeah, so I had one question for Penny, maybe would be the best person to answer. I was wondering what type of screening athletes, student athletes are doing before practices since that started this week?
I'm not sure that Ms. Cottle is still on. It looks like she's not.
Okay.
Yeah, you may want to contact her directly at the health department or send her an email for, for an answer to that. Also, I know that IU has that information available as well. And I know that they've spoken about it at past Friday press conferences. So I would reach out to your connections at IU as well.
Okay.
Great, great question.
Yeah. And then I also, my other question was for Penny as well. So if she's not on the call, that's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, she is. She is so busy. And we, we are lucky to have her when we have her. And yes, and I know she will answer your questions very, very promptly. So thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right. Then Ms. Dayton, who do we have next?
Next is Gina Arthur.
Ms. Arthur? Good morning. You're muted. You're muted.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can now. Thank you. Good morning.
Awesome. Good morning. So I just wanted to call and speak out because on July 4th, a group of five racists nearly lynched a man at our Monroe Lake, and DNR did nothing. His name is Vox Booker, and I'm writing just to reiterate what has already been said. I demand justice for him right away. I also would like to draw the attention of everyone to a young man who was a pre-med science major at IU in 2015. His name was Joseph Smedley. He was found dead in Lake Griffey with 66 pounds of rocks strapped to his chest. And I would like anyone who can to demand action. IU Police Department is not cooperating with the family. There's a lot going on there. And I just wish that you guys would use your power to draw attention to that. Furthermore, there is a young man named Darius Buck who is missing. He's 17 years old. And given the fact that a man was nearly lynched on July 4th, this community should be outraged. Everyone should be looking for Darius Buck. His family is worried. And if they almost lynched one man, we need to be looking harder for our youths. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments. All right. I don't see any other hands raised. Ms. Dayton, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. I appreciate your hard work in making sure that everybody's voices are heard today. Thank you so much. And with that, we will move on to item five in our agenda.
First, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add the termination of the contract with Ken's Westside Service and Towing LLC.
We have a motion. There we go. There it is. All right, we have a motion and a second to amend our agenda. Thank you so much. All in favor of, oh, I'm sorry, we have to do a roll call vote. Mr. Cockrell, will you call the roll on modifying the agenda?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three, zero.
Right. So that will now be item D. D as in dog. All right, excellent. Now on to item five. Thank you so much, Commissioner Jones.
Move approval of the minutes summary for July 1st, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections? Okay. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approving the minutes summary for July 1st, 2020?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three, zero.
Great. Thank you so much. Item six, please.
Move approval of the claims document accounts payable July 8th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. There is Mr. Miller. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. The total for claims was $247,330.62. $100,000 was for COVID-19 emergency response, which was the food and beverage grant awards. That consisted of $65,000 to Wonder Lab, $25,000 to Rising Star Gymnastics, and $10,000 to Trailhead Enterprises. And in addition to that, $63,233.44 was for E&amp;B paving. And finally, $34,371.59 was for American Structure Board.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
No, Mr. Miller always does a great job.
Does indeed. Any public comment on this item? I'll wait to hear Ms. Dayton if there is any comment.
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the accounts payable for July 8th, 2020?
Yeah, yes. Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three, zero.
All right. Thank you so much. And now we're on to new business. Item A, please.
Move to approve an interlocal memorandum of understanding with Ellisville regarding building code inspection services.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Schilling, will you fill us in, please?
Thank you very much. Dave Schilling, the legal department. And for a number of years, Monroe County has been providing building code services to Ellisville through an interlocal agreement that's virtually identical to the one through which we provide building code services to the city. Recently, Ellisville decided to establish their own building department and would like to assume all building code services on a phased plan. And so they have proposed a new interlocal agreement to the county, and that is before you today. And as the, the cover letter with this proposed agreement asked us to comment if we had any questions or concerns about this agreement. So today, and I've shared this agreement with Jim Gerstbauer and received his comments. So I guess with your approval, I would just briefly summarize the agreement, outline Jim's concerns. And if you agree with them, I can report those to the Ellisville Town Attorney Darla Brown and see if we can make some progress on that and then report back.
That sounds like a good plan, Mr. Schilling, if you would, please.
All right. So the term of the agreement is for one year. And under this agreement, the Monroe County Building Department would continue to perform Class I inspections. And those are Class I buildings or non-residential buildings, so basically industrial and commercial buildings. Ellisville would receive all the building permit applications and then convey the Class I applications to the county. The town would establish a permit fee, and the county would not be allowed to add any additional fees to that fee structure. The town would reimburse the county an amount equal to 50% of the permit fees received for each Class I structure performed, for the inspections performed by the county, up to the amount of $10,000. And the county would have to allow the Ellisvilles' building inspector to participate in the inspection of Class I structures. And again, this, the term of the agreement is for one year. So Jim Gerstbauer has a few concerns about this agreement, and I'll outline those for you right now. One, in the past, the county has received the, the building permit applications and would like to continue receiving the Class I structure applications because it's, it's easier for the county staff to review an application, to make sure it's complete, and to communicate with the applicant to obtain any additional information necessary when the application is filed, rather than having an intermediary. We think that it's more efficient and better serves the public to have that done directly by the county. The county would want to, or Jim would like to have the county establish the county services fee rather than the town of Ellisville. And the county would want to obtain the entire fee for the services that it provides. And I would, and, and I think there's some, certainly some opposition to the $10,000 limit on the permit fee. And an example would be the county building department recently inspected a warehouse complex in the Ellisville area, and the total building permit fee was $57,000. So limiting the county's receipts on that to $10,000 would not seem equitable. And the county is certainly willing to have the town's building inspector join it in the inspection of Class I buildings until that, the town building inspector becomes experienced in those types of inspections. However, it would have to be done in a way that is convenient for the county inspectors so that it doesn't interfere or hold up their scheduled inspections. So those are, those are the comments that we have about that. And again, if you agree with that, I'll communicate that to Darla Brown. And if not, well, wait your instructions.
Okay. We'll start with Commissioner Jones. Comments or questions?
I'm pleased that Ellisville is, has put together their own building department. I think this will be good for them. I do agree that we should be careful about, about the fees. We, the county doesn't need to end up paying for a whole lot of inspections in Ellisville that Ellisville has limited their fee for. That's about it.
Okay. Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, I, we had kindly been, had some of this information provided to us before, and I read through those, and I felt like the suggestions from Jim were, were very reasonable, but wouldn't hinder moving forward by the town of Ellisville.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Giffens. I absolutely agree with my colleagues that we should send this back for additional work. There's no reason why county residents should bear the cost of development. They already do in many, many ways. But we certainly believe that if somebody is putting together a commercial project of any kind, that they should ensure that the building is safe for employees and for neighboring businesses and residences. I mean, this is important, vital work. It has to do with building codes, fire safety, all of these things, even energy efficiency. So I don't see any reason why there, there should be a cap when, when, you know, our, our department sends professionals out to do this work, that there's no reason why all of Monroe County residents should have to pay for that part of commercial development. It is a small part of a large project, a small portion of the cost of a large project, but it is vital that this be done correctly. And I think I would also, when this is brought back, I would like some clarity on a, an Ellisville building inspector going out with our commercial inspectors. I don't have an issue with that. It's always good to know more. It's always good to cross-train. But I don't know if you can provide additional information when this is brought back about how much, about how that training is then validated through licensing or other regulatory statutes that would ensure that if Ellisville takes over the commercial side, that, you know, the employees and the nearby businesses and residences are as safe as ever. I think it's great that, that Ellisville is working on their own residential permits. Wonderful. It is a good thing, but I just want to make sure that I have clarity about what's required to do at a, a commercial inspection, the Class I building inspection. So, so it sounds like you have some, some guidance from Mr. Gerstbauer. We appreciate his input and from us. And then you can just bring it back to us when it's ready?
That would be great.
Okay. Should we, should we go ahead and set a date for continuing this item?
Yes. I, I don't know how long it will take Ellisville to respond. I don't know what their meeting schedule is and what kind of approvals that they would need to get. So I will just, I would just say I'll put it back on the agenda when it's, when it's ready. And I will work with Darla soon to, to get that done.
Okay. Are we up against a deadline?
Well, yeah, sooner rather than later. Let me just say that.
Okay. Thank you. So I will go ahead and make a motion that we continue this item until such time as it's ready to be brought back by Mr. Schilling. Can I get a second?
Yes. Second.
Thank you. I thought I heard it, but I didn't see it. Thank you so much, Commissioner Jones. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on continuing this item?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Item is continued.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Mr. Schilling. I appreciate your work on this and Mr. Gerstbauer as well. And now we'll move on to item B, please.
Move to approve a contract with Steel Benefit Services. Fund name: Self-Insurance. Fund number: 4700. In the amount of $1,500 annually plus $1,562.50 monthly.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Sensensteine.
Good morning. Yes, like it says, will, we actually transitioned away from our previous benefit administrators at the end of June and started using Steel Benefits on July 1st. Jordan and I are very excited for this transition. We feel like it's going to provide better, better customer service for Jordan and I to do the things that we need to do, but also a better employee experience when it comes time for open enrollment. So we're really excited about that. As far as the costs of that, it indicates that minimum amount, which is what they, that minimum is what they put into every contract. So we actually have, only have 583 active employees. So we would be paying that minimum amount currently. If we were to get above that 625 employee amount, then we would be paying per employee per month. So right now, we're at 583 is the report that I ran this morning. Do you have any other questions about?
Okay, let me see. I'll check in. Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
No, this just sounds like a very positive stat.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I had, had had questions about some of this, and I believe Ms. Sensensteine has answered them. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I appreciate the effort that goes into investigating a new service. So we know that this wasn't just done quickly, that it was done with a lot of thought. So we appreciate that, that effort. Is there any public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the contract with Steel Benefit Services?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Contract is approved, three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much, everyone. Next item, please.
Move to approve ordinance 2020-30, which amends ordinances 86-09 and 86-06.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
Good morning. This is in the Van Buren subdivision. Actually, we just finished all the work in there, paving and drainage and sidewalk repairs. So now we have a complaint that the cars are driving too fast. So this is to amend the speed limit in the subdivision from 30 mile per hour down to 25. And then also, it's to amend ordinance 86-06 by the addition of the following stop locations: Profile Parkway for Most Road, Milton Lane for Victor Pike, Madison Street for Clear Creek Drive, Doc Mitchell Street for Stray Ridge Road. All these items have been approved by the traffic commission and are warranted by the MUTCD. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
At this time.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
All right. I don't have any either. Appreciate the work of the traffic commission, which is still meeting, of course. And any public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Hi. Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2020-30?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Great, thank you so much again, Ms. Ridge. Thank you, Mr. Cockrell. And with that, we will move on to item D, please. This is our amended item.
I move, I move we terminate the contract with Ken's Westside Service and Towing LLC and that Commissioner Administrator issues the notice of termination letter drafted by the legal department and forwarded to us this morning by Attorney Rice.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell, can you provide some additional information, please?
Yes, we entered into a contract with Ken's Westside Service and Towing LLC on April 27th, 2020. In that agreement, Article 1, Paragraph 4, we have a 30-day written notice termination clause, and this is just exercising that. So if the letter is issued today, it will terminate on or about August 6th.
Right, thank you so much, Mr. Cockrell. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, this has been a decision that we've really been wrestling with for a while. The, in the end, it certainly seemed that this is the best course to take, especially at this time when emotions are running high. And we have definitely received quite a bit of public support for this decision.
Thank you. Commissioner Giffens?
I just echo what Commissioner Jones said. She always states things so eloquently.
Always, thank you so much, both of you. No, I absolutely agree. And I think we owe it to our community to ensure that everyone feels safe and respected throughout our community. And we, we want to ensure that we set the highest standard. And we expect the highest standard from our contractors. So we appreciate that. And with that, any public comment on this item?
There's one, there are two hands raised. Give me one moment, please.
Thank you.
All right, first up is Gina Arthur.
Ms. Arthur, please.
I just wanted to say that someone stated y'all had been wrestling with, this is a case of overt racism. You shouldn't have had to been wrestling with it. And August 6th is not good enough. If you really care about our BIPOC people in the community, you will find a way to terminate this quicker. You will go above and do whatever you have to do. Someone also mentioned emotions are high. Apparently, y'all's emotions and y'all's like moral compass isn't so high right now. August 6th is not good enough. I am done with my time.
Thank you, Ms. Arthur. Another commenter?
Next is Nathan Muchler.
Mr. Muchler?
Thank you very much for, for terminating this contract. It is a step in the right direction. And it is good that anytime the county severs its relationship with racist contractors. That being said, this shows that you know that these things matter. And I appreciate you severing this contract. I would encourage you to look further, to do the investigating to dig, to see what are racist contractors, racist organizations are within the county's jurisdiction. Investigate county employees to find out, have they been posting hate speech on social media? Have they been driving to work and parking with stickers that are hate speech or harmful activity? So again, thank you for moving forward with terminating this contract. It shows that you do have an understanding of the importance of this, but the urgency needs to continue and not let up. And this is a step in the right direction, not a destination. Thank you.
Thank you.
I yield my time.
Thank you. Any other public comments, Ms. Dayton?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Okay, thank you so much. Excellent. And, and with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the termination of the contract with Westside?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
All right, thank you so much. We do have some appointments today. Commissioner Jones?
I move approval of the following appointments to the Health Board. Robert Ren, MD, and Kay Leach, RN, whose terms will expire 12/31/22. Mark Norrell and Ashley Crainer, whose terms will expire 12/31/2023. George Hegeman and Carol Tulukian, MD, whose terms will expire 12/31/2021. And Stephen Pritchard, DDS, whose term expires 12/31/2020.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the following appointments?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, and I thank all these people for serving.
Appointments are-
Absolutely, that's exactly how I was going to finish that off. Thank you, absolutely. We appreciate the work of everyone on the Health Board. They've really just, the, the whole county owes you a debt of gratitude and we do as well, so thank you for that. We do have a few announcements. The, just so everyone knows, we're still moving forward, our Benton Township is still moving forward with the process to join the Monroe Fire District. And to that end, they, of course, with the pandemic, had to reschedule their meetings. They're going to be holding public in-person meetings and also Zoom meetings on the following dates for those who live in Benton, North Benton, South. Tuesday, August 4th, Thursday, August 6th. Both of those are at 6:30 PM. And Saturday, August 8th at 10:00 AM. The, the meetings will be held again. They will, they will, they will have Zoom information and would encourage people to attend virtually if they can. But this, the meetings will also be held physically at the Township Fire Department. And that's at 7606 East State Road, 45. And you will, if you do attend in person, you will be required to physically distance yourself and you will be required to wear a face covering. There will, there may be other requirements as well. So with that, also, I want to note that we worked with our Health Department to come up with this, which is available to all area businesses and organizations, so not-for-profits, businesses, et cetera. It is in the form, this is in an eight and a half by 11 size, but this is available as a smaller size window cleaning for front door so that businesses can alert visitors that they have a face covering requirement. And as you heard Ms. Cuddle discuss earlier, this is going to become everyday life, if it's not already for you. You can pick up for free your decal, any business or organization in the community, and you can pick one up through the Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Bloomington, Inc., or you may meet the fabulous Dina Delauter Myers at the north door of the courthouse. And she will hand you your decals, very safely, of course. And that will be on Tuesdays and Thursdays, 10:00 AM to noon, and from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. If you have questions, please contact our office, Also, thank you again to Ms. Moore for keeping the blood drive process going. We keep selling out, as it were, and we keep filling up those appointments. So the next blood drive again is July 28th. Go to redcross.org to sign up. Ensure that you expand the calendar out to that date. Just input your, your zip code. So thanks to everybody who's given blood and who will be doing so. We are in a dire need of blood products in our community. And thank you to the Convention Center for helping us out. The Monroe County Convention Center has just been so helpful with this. And it's a great way to do it because people can be distanced safely. Also, note that, a reminder that our county buildings are open by appointment only. So please either call, email, or check the website of the department you wish to visit. And you will receive further information. We do require our employees inside Monroe County Buildings and any visitors to wear a face mask or face shield. We do have them available to you if you do not have one. We will provide that for you, but we are open only by appointment. Our boards and commissions continue to meet, as we see the traffic commissions meeting. And they are doing so via Zoom. So for those of you who want information on any of our boards or commissions or a meeting schedule, please go to co.monroe.in.us. Go to the calendar at the bottom of the page, just click on the date. You'll see a list, including a link to join by phone or, or web. You will also see the packet or agenda for the meeting, all on one page, which is really handy. And I do want to note as well that on our homepage at co.monroe.in.us, you'll see a megaphone in the middle banner. And if you go to sign up for resident alerts, you will be alerted, not just for severe weather, that's also an important thing, any time of year, but especially spring and summer. But you will also be able to sign up for those alerts, and they will include health orders. So as health orders are issued, you will get them to your mailbox. You can also get them via text. You choose the delivery method. Me, I do both, just to make sure I see it. But it's a great system. This Everbridge system is something that's, that's just done wonders to ensure that we're communicating emergency information quickly to everybody in the community. It is your system, too. Please sign up, get that information as quickly as possible, delivered right to you. We do want to extend our great thanks to everyone who has been, who have been sewing masks for distribution. It's going to become more important again as our population increases, K through 12 comes back, IU students return. We appreciate you doing that. And please check out the emergency management page on our website to find out about where you could drop those off. Again, many, many thanks to those folks who have been working hard for all of us because it helps all of us that this is going on. So thank you. You know, we can't even imagine how many lives have been saved. And similarly, for those who wear face coverings out in public, thank you. Please, please, you're doing it to protect others. It is so important that we do this. And, and I know we've all talked about it many times, but it is, it is not only a way to say that you care about your community and your neighbors and your friends in the community and that you want to protect them, but it, because you may be asymptomatic, you don't want to be spreading this. But also, it is a good way to protect our small businesses, our local businesses, because if you are wearing your face covering and everyone does the same, then we won't have to close down our businesses again and suffer that economic impact, which means you're protecting jobs and protecting our business community. And it's also the patriotic thing to do. Loving your, your country, loving your community and your neighbors more than yourself. So it's a really good thing to do. So we do want to thank everybody who's doing that regularly. Anything else, Commissioner Jones or Commissioner Giffens?
I think lots of people have pointed out the fact that, that especially people in my age bracket are much more willing to go shop at a place where they know everybody is using a face mask. And so I have shifted where I, where I take my dollars because of that.
Absolutely. No, that's, that's absolutely true. I, I walked out of one establishment because even though I intended that was the one place I was going to shop and I, and I left, I could, I didn't feel comfortable there. So I'm sure there are many in the community who are making that same choice to protect themselves and their families. Anything else, Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens? Okay, with that-
I'll agree with-
Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much. With that, our next meeting is July 15th, right here at 10:00 AM. And we want to thank everyone, especially the folks at the Health Department, Emergency Management, our legal staff, which is just working every hour possible, Ms. Purdy, our staff at the Commissioner's Office, and everyone at Monroe County Government does a great job. And thank you again to Eric Evans and the folks at Technical Services Department. You all are amazing. Thank you for running great meetings. All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.